Good morning, y'all. Call the commission meeting in order. Madam Secretary, please call the row.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Riley Jackson.
Present.
Presiding Commissioner Lynn Martin.
Present. We all join you in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. October the ninth, this month has gone by. All right, today we need to approve the day's agenda. We need to have no minutes to approve and we have...
Do you have an item to remove?
I do. I have one item we're going to remove. And that is, we're going to remove the third quarter report for our county attorney. And we'll hear that at a later date. And we have one financial. It is the auditor's monthly report from September. I think we all received that and looked at that. And if there's no questions, everything else will be in line up with the agenda. Line up with the agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent to...
Still moved. Second.
Thank you. Got a motion, second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Okay. First item today is Employee Services Director Bryant, employee of the third quarter. And today, I'm excited, I know we are all excited, to announce our employee of the quarter is John Beatles, our third quarter. I want to read a little bit about what John has done. We just have a tremendous team of three people that's on IT. But this is a particularly very important thing that happened. John Beatles was nominated by multiple workers for the outstanding contributions during a critical time this past three months. During the Senate Bill 190 sign-up period, we experienced a major crash of the Excel program. Basically, that could have severely impacted our ability to process applications. Thanks to John's quick thinking, dedication, and technical expertise, he developed a new program on the fly that allowed the team to continue processing applications without interruption. His actions ensured that operations continued smoothly and deadlines were met, all while maintaining a great attitude under pressure. Please join us in congratulating John Beatles for going above and beyond. Thank you for your hard work and commitment. You truly are somebody that is in a spirit of excellence. So, we really appreciate that. If you'll come on over here, the Commissioners Jackson and Williams is going to present you. We have a certificate and we also have a gift card for you. Yeah, we'll get it right. I'll peek you through the middle there. So, congratulations. Hey, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Employee Services Director Ms. Bryant, Ms. Amber. Third quarter update.
I got almost my whole team here today.
You got good things.
We lived a bunch of major things last night and there's been no work this morning.
His work is never done.
No.
Okay. This is Employee Services. First on the list is Human Resources. As of last payroll, we had 254 employees. We had 19 new hires in the quarter and we had 15 separations. If you go through the list, some of the highlights are, we did get Cary TC open. So, that's a good thing. That did come... Of course, we're very thrilled with that, but that did come with some troubleshooting. So, we're working through any issues that have happened from that. We... I did the sexual harassment prevention and stability in the workplace training. We had 100% compliance of full-time employees. Which is good for our insurance. It's one of the things that helps us. Right now, what we started in the third quarter, but will be very active in the fourth quarter, is we're working with Crowley to find the most cost-efficient insurance coverage for our employees and for us. So, that is one of the things that we started working on. Another big thing, we completed our MEM workers' comp audit. So, that went very well. That is a combination of the auditor's office, the clerk's office, and mine. Patty put forth payroll information and the auditor's. And we had... This was the first time that they had no questions. So, we have officially figured out exactly what they left, which is a good thing. We also started the... I remember when we went with MEM in June, we decided to go to monthly reporting. And that did put some labor on us. I started doing that in July for the third quarter. And I always go and look to see what we are going to pay exactly into what their estimate was. And we have consistently been under about $4,000 or $5,000. So, that is beneficial to us. We would have gotten it back at the end, but by paying it in real time, we're going to be exact for the year. So, it's just more accurate. And it hasn't taken much. I mean, it's really okay. So, we're doing that successfully. Another big thing is, I have started to adjust the salary matrix based on the study that we did, the market data, took into account the COLA that you guys had voted on, and then the 2026 Missouri minimum wage moving January 1st. So, those will be finalized with the auditor by the end of next week. And then I will continue. I've already started having meetings with the elected officials on how that's going to adjust for their individual office and department heads. We did the Employee Bridge Ride, which I think went really well. And chicken, fish and chicken. I think I had heard nothing but positive things about that. So, I think that would really want people like that. We had a low amount of applications for third quarter that... I mean, in times past, that number has been 304. So, it's just a little low. We're going to also, I may go off on a change upon this, but a lot of the sites that used to be free now make you pay. So, it's a transition for employers and people who are seeking jobs on where to apply. We just have to continue to be on top of that. Even though we had 162 applicants, we still made 19 hires, which is above average for us in a quarter. We have 16 positions open currently, which are listed there. And then, of course, we do all the other normal stuff that's kind of pulled to the... Do you guys have any questions?
Comments, questions? I've got one question. So, 250, 250, is that, is that, that's higher than... I mean, is that one of our highest numbers?
260. We've been in 260 before.
260? I think about a year ago, I don't know. For some reason, around 230 something.
We were at 230 for a long time.
Yeah.
And then we approached that 250 and we've not been back below 250.
Okay, okay. Very, very good. And we're maintaining. Most of our employees are hiring. They're staying with us too.
You always want to see more new hires than separations. So, that's a positive.
That's why it's going to be. But I think it's still a lot better than it was in 2020 when I first came on. I think we're doing a lot better that way.
Yes. Any emails on HR?
Comments, any other comments, questions?
Next is purchasing. You can see that our purchasing team has been very busy. They, she lists out all of the ITVs, RFPs, and then her new contracts, contract renewals. Right now, we have three items on GovDeals. We did only sell two things this quarter, but it was like $19. But we do have the Patch Truck on there, which will bring a little bit more for this quarter. But it doesn't matter. It was giving us no money. So, I mean, anything's a positive. She had a lot of vendor meetings. They did a lot of vendor meetings. So, I listed those out this time. And she, Kim, helped with putting up utilities for the new campus. She was helpful to Todd in a couple of those areas. And both ladies, our whole purchasing department, attended the MAP conference in Columbia, Boone County. Put it on. I thought that was very valuable. And then, our purchasing manager, Kim, she is the vice chairman. So, she actually got to go to Denver for their National Institute of Public Procurement. Or she gets to go in February, and that will not be at any cost to us because of her position with them. But that's just another perk that we get with her, having her as our employee. Any questions about purchasing?
Very good. Actually, I'll just make one comment. We've got, go back to IT. The IT and purchasing, all the departments that you have under your umbrella is the best in the state. I just can't imagine anybody better than what we already have. So, that's why they win the awards they need.
Well, and I will tell you, other counties are calling now asking how we set up Employee Services because they like the concept. So, it is something that we are trend setter on. Looking at the IT list, I know it's short, but it is so time-consuming. One of the really cool things is Common 1 and Common 2 are now have VPN connectivity to us. That has never been before. So, now they can print. We can share files with them. We can do their IT backups. So, that's very valuable to them. We've never been connected. We've got new sheriff's office. We have new firewalls for their remote access. And they still did 130 service desk tickets. And I will tell you, it's more than that because a lot of people call and do not put in a ticket. And they still, they're handling it. And I'm not going to point fingers because I do it too. So, but they're always very quick to respond. They're very customer service oriented. They have several things that we're still working on, but they are always working to improve. I have a great team. I do. You have any questions about that?
Any comments, questions?
Nope.
Very good job. Very good. Good report. Good job. Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Kelly, our recorder, third quarter report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I hope you had a chance to look over what I emailed you the other day. So, for the third quarter for 2025, we took in a total allocations of $209,307.09, which is above last year at this time. In 2024, we only took in $198,000. So, we're over $10,000 above what we took in last year. We did record 1,267 transfer documents. And then, for the year, we've taken in $581,498.11, which is about $42,000 more than last year at this time. And for the year, we've done 3,512 transfer documents. So, many pieces of property have transferred. This last quarter alone, we've done 50 Platts and surveys. So, we're still growing. They're still doing subdivisions. We do it for the total of the year, 140 Platts and surveys, which I will say, we do probably more Platts and surveys than most of the counties in the state of Missouri. Because people are just, other reporters are just flabbergasted by how many Platts I have here. So, we're growing. And we're still growing. And that's, I mean, it's good. We're up. We haven't hit, I've seen a few more foreclosures when the interest rate went up. But it's not really affected us too much. So, I'm not worried about that.
No. I think our growth is going to continue. Any comments or questions? I just got one. How many employees do you have in your department?
I have three full-time and two part-time.
So, think about that, people. People that's on live today and will be watching it later on. You've got a very small staff that's doing thousands of documents. And I just, we applaud you for everything you do. Your department works hard. And we appreciate it.
I should keep track of marriage licenses. We did 156 marriage licenses just last quarter. 438 for the year. We tend to get a lot of those. I think part of that is because of ransom. A lot of people do destination weddings and ransom. And we are much easier to get to than Tannehill County's.
Yeah, well, again...
Courthouses.
Yeah.
But since the last quarter, we have had one law go into effect, which has been good. Probably slowed down marriage license a little bit. Now, in the state of Missouri, you have to be 18 years old to get married. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. Mom and dad can't sign for you anymore. Judge can't sign for you anymore. You just have to be 18. So, I mean, that probably cut in a little bit, but it's good for Missouri. Less underage marriages, probably less divorces.
Yeah, I agree. Well, very good job. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Mr. Ted, our collector, third quarter report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Did you all get my email?
Yes.
Survey.
We had a busy summer in the collector's office. Started out, actually started out back in February, taking the SB 190 application. And we finished them up in June. Took in over 6,500 applications. That was new and renewals on it, which resulted in over a million dollars in tax credits for the 2025 tax year on it. We're working on a new application for the renewals for the 2026 years, which the new applications will still have to be notarized. And there'll be an insert in the tax statements stating the dates of starting to accepting the new renewals, like we did last year on it. And then, we will be sending out the renewal applications the last part of February, right there. So, they have them first of February. That's the reason we do that is so that they don't get them confused with getting the assessment forms that come out from the assessor's office for the personal property on it. Another insert that'll be in the statements is a mail-out informing of the dates that we go to the city halls for one day only. And that'll be on November the 10th. We'll be in Billings from 9:00 to 12:00. November the 12th, we'll be in Clever from 9:00 to 12:00. And all of these are at the City Hall in these towns. November the 13th, we'll be in Sparta. November the 14th, we'll be in Highlandville. And they will also need to bring their tax statement because we don't set up to be able to print those. And we do not accept anything but, we don't, are set up to do credit cards or anything like that. But I know the people that when we go there, everyone is very pleasant and happy that we're there to be able to accommodate them and take care of them on it. And I know I'll have to go through another step, but we'd like to... If the Commissioner's car is not being used those four days, we'd like to request it for the, to go to use it. Our statements, because I know there'll be, people will be wondering about that. We're scheduling them to be mailed out for delivery on November, about November the 1st on it. And to our books for the real estate for 2025, with the credits on there for the SB 190, this year was, on the real estate side, was $97,009,582.22 in comparison to 24 books, $89,426,850, which was an increase of $7,669,172.02 on it. And as far as partial counts, the amount of partials that went up, which have been, you know, where they went in and Kelly was mentioning the plaque maps where they divided, subdivided, and things like this, there was an increase of 697 partials for this year on it. And I broke out a couple that I thought that might be of interest to you guys. Common 1, in '25, you're on the books for $143,171. And over last year, it's an increase of $8,640. The county levy, the increase this year is 700, the amount is $717,563, which is an increase of $52,552 on it. So, switching to the personal property, we have an increase of almost a million dollars. This year, it is, the total is $21,852,000. The 24 was $20,898,000. So, it's almost a million dollars increase. And the amount of records on the books is 564. And of course, we always have those that are added on during the year that people didn't turn them in or different things that happens with it, especially the two-year plates. A lot of folks, until they get ready to go after license, they don't go come do that on it. But that's what I was charged with for this year. Talk a little bit about the collections through September. Of all the personal property, of all the unpaid, is $2,059,000. The 24 amount is $1,073,842. The collection percentage is 96.5% on that. One thing that helped us was, if you remember back in the summer when the city of Springfield passed the ordinance and they, on the paper plates that were expired, and it was amazing how many phone calls. How much do we owe you? We got to get this paid because we're going to get a ticket if we don't get this paid. We had a lot of those calls, a lot of payments that we got paid all the way back to '21, '22, '23 of those that, even though they was up and going to be driving, going to work in Greene County, those people got us paid on it. So, that really helped. But my understanding, they're giving away with the paper plate, if I'm correct with it. I don't know. I believe that's what's happening with them. On our real estate tax lien sale, we only had four parcels that we auctioned off this year. And all four of them were sold. Three of them had excess funds totaling over $100,000, just the excess funds. They were all first-year offerings. I believe last year, we only had threes. And the year before, we had four. So, we worked pretty hard on that, keeping those. Or we don't have more of them on it. And that's what keeps us down. The real estate property as of September unpaid all year's total was $1,385,167. The 24 amount is $1,072,340. The collection percentage is 99% on it. Really proud of that part on it. And I'm proud of the other one, 96% on it. But that's my third quarter report. Any questions?
Very good.
One thing to remember on your vehicle, you're needing that vehicle call over to Cary.
Yeah.
She can walk you through. Now that you have those dates, because it's first come, first served. So, just make sure you get that book soon as you can. That way, they've got it for you.
Yeah. We used it the other day. Guaranteed Bank was not able to do or deposit remotely. And Kathy used it driving it up there on it. Worked out great.
Very good. Very good report. Any other comments or questions? I just got one. Again, how many people, how many employees do you have in your department?
We've got four full-time and two, two part-timers right now.
You've got a great staff as I walk around to different departments. And I know the other commissioners do too. I mean, we see how hard people are working. And I think the thing I want to point out is, look at the volume increases. Look at the volume increases. And we don't, we're pretty lean in all of our departments. And we may have 254 employees in this county, but we're pretty lean. We don't have extra employees sitting around. They're working every day. And the numbers keep increasing. And we appreciate all the work that you guys do.
I can look back, 30 years ago, I collected a little over $9 million. And I had this, I had one less employee at that time during tax season than what I have now. And this year, or I'll take again, I believe last year, for the year, we took in about $120 million total with the same staff.
Same staff. You got, obviously, you got great efficiency. All the different departments have really improved in efficiency. But the workers are very, very good.
Technology and thanks to our IT department and like John coming through. Because that morning, I can remember it very well, when that crashed and we could not get anything done with the SB 190. He saved the day.
Yeah, we really appreciate that. So, one last comment I'd just like to make on behalf of the commission is, is obviously, we see all these numbers going up and collections going up. And I'm really proud that the other two commissioners and I, for three years in a row, have kept our Christian County levy the same. the same. We could have raised it because of the Hancock Amendment, because of the sales tax going down, but how, collection going down. However, we chose not to, three years in a row, trying to set a good example, I believe, for the rest of the county to try to hold your levies down as much as you can, to reduce taxes as much as you can. And I'm proud of that, but I'm certainly proud of the employees in the county. So thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is IT manager, Mr. Bill.
Good morning, John.
Good morning.
We just have some surplus equipment to get rid of, to recycle. We use recycling center in Springfield that does most of the paper recycling here. This time, we don't have any hard drives. They have a bare minimum to bring a specific truck to shred those on-site. We don't have enough, so we're doing some cleanup in our room in there. We've got, I think, 59 monitors and I think it was 16 PCs. With those PCs, we've taken the hard drives out, wiped them, also taken the memory out of those parts at other places if and when needed. So this is just for them to come and recycle the monitors and the what's left inside those PCs.
Very good. Any comments, questions? Okay, very good. Well, it's important to, it's absolutely important to kind of get rid of the things that we don't want still.
Absolutely, and do it in a, in a responsible manner.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I'm not, as they say, a tree hugger in any way, shape, or form, but we should, of the things that we need to 100% do right, like I said last week with the circuits and catching up with that one vendor, I think in government, we have to lead by example, as you were saying a second ago.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on, our next item is our public, our planning administrator.
Planning job, all copies. This is exactly what was in your packets. Yeah. But I can try and just. Okay, so the item we have for you to consider this morning is our additional right-of-way dedications that we take in, according to Article 5, Section 2 of our subdivision regulations, whenever property is developed or subdivided, that section of our code would require that any deficient right-of-way would be deeded over to the county to help offset, you know, current and potential future impacts of the development that these people are requesting. So in the packets, there's a map that shows the approximate locations of where all those sections lie, a list with the names, widths, and then numbers that correspond to the map. And then the surveys that basically triggered this section of code are numerically 1 through 17 behind that. So staff is asking the commission to make a motion to approve the right-of-way dedications that we have before you today. That's all I've got. I can answer any questions on that.
So all of these right-of-way dedications were triggered by a building permit request?
Not a building permit, a subdivision request. So someone came in, requested to subdivide a larger tract into smaller tracts, and as an outcome of that, it triggers that code to require the right-of-way along those sections.
None of these are specifically triggered by, I want to build a barn on my property, and now we're holding back their building permit until such time as they give up the right-of-way, which is something that we do do, pursuant to the code allows for that. This is actual planning of subdivisions.
Yeah, yeah, these are minor subdivisions.
Yes.
I have no questions.
No, no other comments or questions. We need a vote on that.
I'll make a motion to approve. Say in the departments for recommendations.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Accept the right-of-way. To accept the right-of-way. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is purchasing manager, Ms. Kim. Oh, she's not going. We got a very, very. Good morning.
This is a contract renewal for ITV 2021-3 for voter registration canvas services. This is the second and final contract renewal for the voter registration canvassing, confirmation mailings, and related services to be performed for the county clerk, provided by Edward J. Rice Company. The contract provides voter canvas registration list maintenance services that will ensure its compliance with Section 8 of the National Voter Registration Act of 1993, the Help America Vote Act of 2002, and all applicable Missouri statutes. The vendor provides guidance on current procedures and documents, and proposes improvements that streamline the flow of information, enhance communication with voters, and optimize operational efficiencies, including the distribution of information via the U.S. Postal Service. The vendor also provides consultation and design software development, and mailing of voter ID cards, address confirmation notices, ID verification notices, and polling location change notices. The recommendation is to renew the contract with Edward J. Rice.
Very good. Any comments or questions?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve.
Second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. Thank you. Okay, the next item again, we're going to be talking with Mr. Teague here today. Yeah, come on back here, Richard. This is our outdoor lighting that we're going to be talking about, and removal, installation and removal.
So this is a contract renewal, ITV 2024-14 for the Christian County Courthouse, outdoor lighting and installation and removal. And this is for the Ozark Courthouse lighting installation removal, lighting the historic courthouse and lawn for the holidays is an annual tradition. This is a bid for a vendor to provide all labor and a utility vehicle with a lift to install and remove the decor. This is the first renewal for this contract. Pricing remains the same, and the recommendation is to renew the contract with holiday decor.
So the total price with the added evergreen tree over the rim on the side of the lawn that we did last year is 17,550. They did comp that tree last year, so it was $1,000 less, and they're not going to comp it this year. And that bid was on there for that, and he just gave that to us. So I think that was a great one. For the city's contribution of $5,000, that leaves the county spending 12,550. We're asking you to approve that today. The PL has been entered. It's just waiting for the commission to approve or deny.
Okay. Any comments or questions? When will the lights be installed? So when would they be turned on?
He doesn't, he doesn't start working on until the week after Halloween. So that Halloween Monday, he has the option, weather permitting, and his schedule will start working on, getting those up on the building itself. We generally don't turn them on until about a week before the parade, which I believe is the 22nd of November. But it's going to, it varies from year to year depending on his schedule. We're not his only customer, obviously, but, and if there's any other issues that may pop up between county and county.
And you guys have maintained and stored all of our lights, most of those, those different.
He does the building itself and wraps the trees, the three big trees, and then provides all the power lines going to all the displays that the county puts out. So my guys will do the smaller trees, this too big evergreen for the south side of the lawn, the arches, the big stone man, all that stuff. But he provides all the power runs in, neither so nothing's underpowered or overpowered, takes care of all that, puts all the timers in. And then if we have a storm or something, and there's also on this quote, there is a $50 an hour fever, and we come out and fix something, maybe add some to weather or ventilator.
And most of the lawn decorations, as I understand, were donated. The county's not spent a lot of money on buying these expensive decorations that you see. A lot of them are donated.
The county has built a lot of that stuff in.
And you built things.
But yes, a lot of the material is donated, not all of it. We buy some paint. This year, we had to repaint most of our wooden decorations, just the weather. We own all the mini lights, but all the lights on the buildings, the lights on the canyon and the Santa Claus took on the building, that's all provided by this.
And our little train that the kids ride on, that was donated.
We built that. The parks were donated. So Loftus donated, I think, a living lawn horse to put all that. Kit Grimes donated one, it's got the engine. We had another guy donate the engine for it. Hamby Construction donated all the wooden material. I think we were out painting some, some of the metal to build it, plus our labor.
Well, I, I think that, you know, we've been doing that a while now, and it's just absolutely, this is a destination. So this, this courtyard is a destination for people in Christian County and other counties to come. I mean, you can, you can see it on websites and different, different social media platforms. They're talking about what we do down here all the time. And what I've noticed is not just, so what's the day, the night that we're doing?
Friday night lights.
Friday night lights.
Actually, I should know.
But we, so we're only doing one Friday night light.
December 12.
December 12.
12.
Yeah, so, so we're only doing one. However, every night, if you would just drive around the square, once the lights are turned on, it is so beautiful. And not only that, we've got those art high school, the art class, they'll be coming over here and painting all the windows again around the courthouse. They'll paint windows and all the businesses around the square. And when you start putting all the things together, you see people taking pictures seven days a week at night, coming and taking family portraits and things like that.
Yeah, it helps boost the local economy.
Yeah, I, I absolutely think it's an awesome thing, so.
In the history of that, how long have they, have you guys been doing that? decorate?
Six years for Friday night lights.
Six years. Started off, just did the building itself the first year. And then COVID happened and it grew, so we started getting donations, we started trying to get people out of their cars, doing things at night, social distancing. And we've tried to grow it a little bit every year. This is the first year we don't have anything new to add. We haven't got any donations. Working on a project, hopefully we can get a few donations to add one fixture, and I'm not going to tell you what that is yet. But hopefully there, there is a surprise, but if we can't get that, then we won't have that. But we did, like I said, repaint all of our wooden outdoor displays this year. It just, it was time, after five, six years, they needed it. And we hope everything's set up, start setting up the week after Halloween.
Well, Friday night lights, you know, Historic River District contributes and helps a lot too. We've got the carriage ride, that's really popular for a lot of people. And we've got choirs, we've got different schools coming and performing and things like that. So there's just, there's just lots of good stuff going on. So, so I think it's important for our county to provide that for our citizens. I think they appreciate it. So I appreciate your team, what you do. So you've got a very small staff too, and you do a lot of work, and I appreciate that. So we need a motion to approve the installation and removal of our lights.
I'll make a motion to approve ITV 2024-14.
Okay.
Second.
I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes, thank you very much. Okay, we're down to communications. And do you all have anything that you want to communicate? Okay, I just have one or two things, something just to give everybody an idea of what, what I think we're going to try to do. Mr. Todd from Resource Management, he and I were talking just two or three days ago. You know, our campus over there, we got 40 acres, and we got our first building, and we've got the clinic open, and we'll be talking about what we're going to do with the other 17,000 square feet and how we're doing all that. And we've got grass growing and things, and it's looking so much better. But it doesn't have any trees unless the trees are still, were already there. There's a lot of bare land. And so, so Todd actually came up with this idea, and I've been thinking about, how could we landscape? I love landscaping, I love, that's why I love what our courtyard looks like. And we need trees. We need trees. Trees are expensive. If you buy shade trees and pine trees, whatever you buy, they're expensive, especially if you buy large enough ones that they're going to grow faster. And so we are going to be looking for donations. The county doesn't need to spend money on the trees. We're going to look for donations. And I'll be calling every one of the nurseries, small ones, large ones here in the county and elsewhere, trying to see, because if we can get donations, we can put little plaques up in honor of donation, we can put whatever we need to. As people are walking around our trails and things like that, they can see who donated these trees. I think we're going to have people donate trees. I have a feeling somebody like Johnny Morris will donate some trees. And I think this will, we'll try to get those things, trees planted this next spring, and hopefully we can work something out with Richard and his team to help us plant the trees and, but it'll really help our campus over there. I think it will help our community, make people proud when they go over there. And so that's what we're going to do. So I just thought it was a real good cost-saving idea to do. And then I was just thinking about all the things that go on in the county. So we have Ms. Brenda Porterfield, our new administrative assistant, that also is assistant for our attorney, and she and I are going to start our newsletter in January, will be every other month. And every office holder, department manager can contribute. This is not a commission newsletter, this is a county newsletter that we're going to do with a two-month calendar every time. And most of the copies will be email copies, so we're going to be having an email campaign starting next week, and trying to encourage citizens to let us have their emails, so we can email out that newsletter every other month. However, we're going to make some hard copies. These will be colored copies, and we're going to make some colored copies for the nursing homes and different senior places that maybe don't access computers and things like that. So really excited about having another communication piece that, that will connect the county to all of our citizens. And, you know, we're open to ideas from every elected official, citizens like Wayne, everybody that could tell us, what do you want in a newsletter? Because I think it's, I think we're going to grow into something that's going to be extremely good this next year in 2026. So anyway, anything else? Okay.